Order our legislative session for today. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To maintain decorum, there will be no demonstrations, banners, signs, applause, profanity, vulgar language, or personal insults. Ms. Fister, will you do the roll call, please?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you.
Would you like me to make a motion now?
I will entertain a motion, yes.
All right, Council President, due to our limited time for this meeting, I would make a motion that we limit testimony to one minute each.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of limiting testimony to one minute, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. Ms. Fister, will you read the consent agenda, please?
Item number one, agreement Amendment B with the Salvation Army Spokane for shelter operations at the Trent Resource and Assistance Center from November 1, 2023 through November 30, 2024, $3,730,000. Deferred from December 4, 2023, City Council Meeting. Number two, agreement Amendment A with revived counseling Spokane, P L L C for shelter services from January 1, 2024 through April 30, 2024, $100,000. Three, updated service contract with Clean Energy. Doing business as Clean Energy Corporation Newport Beach, California for operation and maintenance services for C N G site on an as-needed basis from October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024 with four additional one-year extensions, $250,000, previously approved as part of the adoption of Resolution 2023-93.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Council President, I would make a motion that we substitute the revised version for O P R 2023-0017.
Is there a second?
Second.
The movement is second, substitution. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? No abstentions, ayes have it. Ms. Fister, would you read the substitution?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. I did read the substitution.
Did you read the substitution? Okay.
Yeah.
In that case, we'll be taking a public comment. The first one up will be John Alder, one minute, and after that, David Kane.
If you didn't know John Alder, I live in northeast Spokane. All the greatest shelter is in immediate need for the winter. Salvation is good as provider. They provide assistance for myself and pay in past city utility bills when times are tough. But can we please stop using Band-Aids for the homeless and start providing permanent housing solutions? Being 65 going on 66, especially concerned for the over 65 population that will represent 25% of the Washington state population is already making up too much of the current homeless population. I use the oxygen heater at home as well as taking diabetic shots that require refrigeration. Imagine homeless that were suffering the same problems or even kidney dialysis try to solve these problems. All these problems would better solved with permanent homes, also avoiding costly hospital procedures currently being used. Please find a solution where permanent housing and not shelters are the answers.
Thank you, John. David Kane?
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, Council. Thank you for this short window of time just to speak. My name is Captain David Kane. I'm the leader of the Salvation Army here in Spokane, and we believe deeply in the work that's happening at the Track Shelter. As we've taken over the contract, it's been our priority to create a very safe environment that is low barrier in order to allow the folks that stay in our care to allow the dust to settle in their lives. And then our vision for the shelter is that we would create strong collaborations so that we can wrap services around all who stay in our care and we can move them towards solutions. We just know that homelessness is a complex issue. It's not one issue, it's multifaceted. And in order to solve some of these very complex issues, we as a provider need to link arms with others who care deeply about the people we serve and about our community and to move towards solutions together. We believe that happens well under our care of this shelter, and we're very grateful. Lastly, I'd just like to invite anyone from the Council to come and have a tour of our facility.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Diane Hutton, and after that, we'll have Chris Scheller.
Thank you for allowing me to have a time to speak. I just want to talk about the people that are staying at the shelter, the people that didn't want to come into shelter, that are now coming into shelter. They're learning to live in community, learning to build healthy communities, and I think that it takes the entire community. It's not just one entity that can do it. We've seen so many moved out of homelessness by working together with all the other agencies in the community. The street outreach that Spokane Regional Health puts on has been phenomenal with resources, and we work together on the same clients. So I just think that we need a space where these people can come and decompress and look to the future and have self-worth that they can move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
I had to cut down my five-minute speech to one minute.
It's doable.
Huh?
It's doable.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having us and for your precious time. I have been working at the Trent Shelter since October of 2022, from just a few specialists to over 14 of us now. Revive gets people permanently housed and employed weekly and a lot of times daily. That's not to mention how many people who are getting into transitional housing. There are 10 times the amount of people living on the streets than the 350 people at the Track Shelter every night. At least at Track, they have a bed, warmth, food, services, ports, porta-potties, and showers. That's better than the conditions of the 3,500 others with no options, barely surviving on the streets. Track is a much better place. With revived services, they always have a safe space, people to lean on and talk to, and people who recognize them as people.
Thank you, Chris. Joe Adair, and then Michael McGuire.
Hello, Council. I presented several times now just on the concern with funding happening outside of the rest of the homeless system with Track for now almost two years. That's still a concern. I hope that we are taking more consideration of the whole system in the picture moving forward as well as just looking at outcomes and really moving towards what are outcome results and digging into the data when making these big decisions like this. And so that would be my recommendation for this as well as others. If you don't have the data yet, then this is a big decision to make without it. Thank you.
Michael?
Michael McGuire, Spokane, Washington. Council President Wilkerson, members of the Spokane City Council, Merry Christmas to all. A human life cannot be measured in terms of dollars. Please keep the Trent Shelter open through the winter, and please offer transportation to the shelter for the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council commentary? Are you ready for the vote?
Just for clarification, are we taking 1 through 3 together then?
Yes, we can take 1 through 3.
You can take them oral.
We can take them oral, so Councilmember Bingle.
I'll just quickly say some things that, you know, Captain Kane and your crew, I appreciate you coming down here. One of the things I've heard from businesses in the area is since your leadership came into what it is today, that the businesses feel much better about the area, and so I want to thank you for the increase there and caring for a region outside of the shelter itself. I appreciate that. To Joe's point, you're absolutely right. There's a lot of funding that's going to one project when you look at the entire system in and of itself. We need to really take a holistic look at it, and that's one of the reasons why when we first started the conversations on the Regional Homeless Authority, you know, 10 months ago, what we want to be able to do is increase the collaboration that's already happening in the city of Spokane because, again, everybody is feeling a very good lane. But all together, I think we can be very effective when we're looking at homelessness response in and of itself. And so looking at outcomes, making sure that we're measuring outcomes, making sure that we're getting the results that are needed, that's something that I know that this entire Council is really concerned with, and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by the people who are there now and the people who may deal with it in the future. And I want to thank Nicolette for all of her work on this. I want to thank everybody who's been doing this work. Unfortunately for us, there is only so much money. While we want to help absolutely every single person that needs help, it's not within our realm to be able to do that. So what we want to do and what we need to do is be as effective with these dollars as we can be, and I look forward to many more of those conversations in the future because it's absolutely essential for us to be able to help the most people as possible getting, transitioning from homelessness into stability to be as effective as we can with those dollars. And so I look forward to those continued conversations from our many community partners, and I appreciate all of your work.
Councilmember Stratton, and Councilmember Cathcart.
I just want to, we all know in this room that this issue is complicated, and we've not disagreed, we've not agreed all the time with each other. But what's important is that we care about what happens to people, and that is the most important thing, whether we understand why people are homeless and needing services or not. These are human beings that need to be protected at this point in their lives. And I just hope, I'm not going to be here for future conversations, but I do hope these conversations continue with a foundation of compassion and that we can continue to work together and find increasingly better ways to deal with this and more opportunities. And the final thing I will say is a thank you to Nicolette and also to the C H H S Department and to Kim because I think while all of this gets crazy and we're talking about it, we're trying to find the answers, and we're all right, or we're all wrong, or whatever happens, it's staff that gets kind of in the center of this, and they're the ones that are doing the work and getting thrown under the bus once in a while, and it gets a little crazy. So thank you to Kim, thank you, Nicolette. And please continue these conversations, and please just remember that we're all human, and it could be any one of us, it could be anyone in our family or anyone we love that could find themselves homeless one day, and let's give them all an opportunity to succeed and to find joy in life again. Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, very, very brief. I just want to triple down on the thank you to both Nicolette Ockletree for all of your work to get us answers to questions and Kim McCollum as well. I know it's not easy, and there's just a lot of back and forth and running around, but we definitely appreciated all the efforts that you guys have put in, so thank you.
Councilmember Bingle.
Just again, to follow up, thank you, Nicolette, and also happy birthday.
Oh.
But I really do appreciate the work that went into this, the flexibility, and, you know, every winter we get in the same spot of what do we do now? And I think we're all united in finding a more sustainable path forward and doing better for our unhoused, so thank you.
Councilmembers Oppone?
Yeah, I'll just say that ready to move this next chapter and start fresh for a new contract and the next steps on this, I think there's still a lot of frustrations that this contract doesn't resolve those frustrations, and so looking forward to the next things to resolve those.
I believe I am my brother's keeper. That's my personal belief, and everyone out there, whether housed or homeless or whatever their situation is, it's a responsibility to do as well as we can do within the constraints that we have. This is still complicated, it has not been solved. This is a Band-Aid until we get more data and how we move forward and how we fund it, but we do not want anyone on the streets as much as a city. We can prevent that. I think a big shout-out goes to the C H H S Board. They are all volunteers. They have been in the trenches, going through all these gyrations of council members and staff and community, and there is no perfect solution. We are just doing the best we can. So I echo the thanks to everyone and for you all who came down here today to show support that we need to meet a need in our community. With that being said, I would entertain a vote to approve all the consent items. Just aye, I'll take an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. Moving on, we will go to ordinance C. Yes, I gotta take my glasses off.
Okay. Which version would you like me to read, or do you want to take an action to?
Are we doing interim first?
We're going to read them.
We are going to the ordinance amending the ballot proposition first, and in order for there to be a substitution on that, the one that's in the packet, it will require a rule suspension.
I will so move that we suspend the rules for the purposes of substituting this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor suspended rules indicate by aye.
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 Any noes? Ayes to cheer, rules are suspended.
Point of clarification, is there a mechanism for us, just out of curiosity, to waive the reading so the clerk doesn't have to read this entire thing?
But she looks like she really wants to.
I don't.
Happy to do it, but I just thought I'd offer.
Well, I don't know if everyone really has clarity on what's in the substituted version.
I don't recall us ever suspending the rules to waive the reading, but that's totally up to Council and.
I think it's a charter requirement, but I'm not sure.
That's fine.
So bear with me.
There hasn't been a motion to add it.
I also move that we adopt the version that has been circulated by Chris Wright this afternoon at, I don't know the time.
This morning at 11:20.
This morning at 11:20. Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved a second to adopt the version circulated this morning. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Chairs, aye, approved. Ms. Fister?
Sometimes Ms. Fister reading the circulated version at 11:20?
Yes. Ordinance number C 36480, an ordinance submitting a ballot proposition to the voters of the city of Spokane, amending the city council redistricting process by adding a new section 62 to Article 7, repealing sections 59 and 60 of the Spokane City Charter and declared an emergency. Whereas RCW 298.76.010 provides in part that the city is responsible to periodically redistrict its election districts based on population data from the most recent federal decennial census, and whereas pursuant to RCW 298.76.0103B, the city must prepare by November 15 of each year ending in 1 a plan for redistricting its districts consistent with the criteria set forth in RCW 298.76.010 subsection 4. And whereas RCW 298.92.050 subsection 3 of the Washington Voter Rights Act further regulates the formation of legislative districts, and whereas pursuant to section 60 of the city charter, a decennial districting board is established during the year of state and federal redistricting to accomplish city council redistricting. And whereas the people of Spokane wish to avoid unnecessary ambiguities in the current city charter provisions that regulate the redistricting process in the city of Spokane. And whereas the city council previously enacted ordinance C 36389, which in conjunction with the city council's Resolution 2023-43 proposed a change to the city charter to cure ambiguities in the redistricting process, which proposition is currently scheduled for the February 13, 2024 special election. And whereas the deadline for amending the current ballot proposition and delivering a new ballot proposition to the Spokane County Auditor is December 15, 2023, and there will be no further opportunity in the current year for the city council to formally alter the current ballot proposition. And whereas a redistricting commission reflective of the community at large and committed to a fair, open, and transparent process is essential to maintaining public trust, and whereas the city council accordingly finds that an urgency and emergency exists such that this ordinance is needed for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety and/or the immediate support of city government and its existing public institutions, now therefore the city of Spokane does ordain section 1 that Article 7, section 59 of the city charter of the city of Spokane is hereby repealed. Section 2 that Article 7, section 60 of the city charter of the city of Spokane is hereby repealed. Section 3 that Article 7 of the city charter of the city of Spokane shall be amended by adding a new section to read as follows. Article 7, section 62, citizen-led council redistricting. A decennial districting commission comprised of seven commissioners shall be appointed no later than May 1 in the year of county, state, and federal redistricting to accomplish city council redistricting. A, membership appointments. The office of the city clerk on behalf of the city shall solicit candidates for the districting commission. The city clerk in consultation with the city attorney shall confirm that interested candidates are qualified for membership on the districting commission as described in section B and not otherwise prohibited from serving as members under section C. The city clerk shall publish a list of all applicants for the districting commission and deliver a list of qualified candidates to the mayor and city council. Including in the list are the city council districts in which each candidate lives and information confirming qualification for membership. Number 1, from the pool of qualified candidates, the mayor shall select and appoint three commissioners, one from each city council district. These appointments shall not be subject to city council approval. Two, from the pool of qualified candidates, the city council by majority vote shall select and appoint three commissioners, one from each city council district. These appointments shall not be subject to mayor of veto. Number 3, no later than 30 days following the final appointment to the districting commission, the sixth-appointed member shall select by affirmative majority plus one vote, a seventh non-voting member from the remaining pool of qualified applicants who will act as chairperson and preside over meetings of the districting commission. Number 4, a vacancy on the districting commission shall be filled by the authority who made the initial appointment or their successor from the pool of qualified applicants within 15 days after the vacancy occurs. B, membership qualifications. Number 1, candidates must be a current resident of the city of Spokane and maintain that primary residence for a minimum of two consecutive years. Number 2, candidates must be registered to vote. Number 3, to the extent practical and in compliance with all applicable laws, the city council and mayor of Spokane, each acting with full autonomy as separate appointing authorities, will endeavor to constitute a redistricting commission that reflects the Spokane community's broad demographic and geographic diversity, including but not limited to differing cultural, racial, ethnic, gender, political, and experiential backgrounds. C, membership prohibitions. Number 1, candidates cannot have been a registered lobbyist in the state of Washington within two years prior to this election or one year following the end of membership on the commission. Number 2, candidates cannot hold or be within two years removed of holding any elective office other than a precinct committee officer. Number 3, within one year of the last general election and while a member of the districting commission candidates cannot campaign for an elective office other than precinct committee officer or actively participate and contribute to or fundraise for any political campaign of any candidate for local, state, or federal office. Number 4, candidates may not seek election appointment to a city council position for two years after the effective date of the districting plan. D, redistricting consistent with Washington state law. Number 1, the districting plan shall be consistent with RCW 298.92.050 subsection 3 and RCW 298.76.010 subsection 4, as they may be amended from time to time pertaining to the criteria for districting city council district boundaries. To the extent permitted by law, boundaries of neighborhoods and communities with common interests shall be prioritized and the division minimized. Number 2, the districting commission shall utilize the most recent available census information and guidelines for districting as established in RCW 44.05.090 as applicable. E, redistricting procedures. Number 1, the districting commission shall convene a minimum of five public hearings throughout the city, including at least one meeting within each existing council district to receive written and oral comments and to accept proposed districting plans from the public. The districting commission shall only consider those plans which are submitted by individual city residents. Number 2, the meetings and materials of the districting commission shall be transparent and publicly accessible, including online video streaming and archiving for the broadest possible public access. The commission shall prepare and publicize its minutes within 21 days of any meeting. Number 3, the city council shall by ordinance appropriate such funds as may be reasonably needed for the districting commission to conduct their business under this article. The commission may employ within its budget authority any necessary experts, consultants, and attorneys not employed by the city to carry out its duties as established in this charter. Number 4, no later than August 1, the districting commission shall select five preliminary districting plans for a final public review and comment. The commission shall allow a period of at least 30 days for public review and comment of preliminary districting plans. F, final plan adoption. Number 1, no later than October 1, the districting commission shall adopt by affirmative majority plus one vote, a final districting plan from the five districting plans selected for public review and comment, which will be transferred to the city council along with published report that will minimally include, A, population for every district, B, an explanation of the criteria used in developing the plan with, 1, a justification for any deviation in a district from the average district population, or 2, a justification for any fracturing in an existing neighborhood council boundary between multiple council districts. C, a map of all the districts. Number 2, in the event the districting commission is unable to agree on adoption of a districting plan by October 1, the matter shall be referred to the presiding judge of the Spokane Municipal Court, who shall determine which of the plans developed by the districting commission best complies with redistricting criteria set forth in section 62D of this charter and shall forward that determination to the city council no later than October 31. Number 3, upon receipt of the commission of its proposed redistricting plan or upon receipt of the determination by the presiding judge of the Spokane Municipal Court, the city council shall consider whether to adopt a proposed districting plan. Any approval of the proposed districting plan must be approved by four affirmative votes of the city council. The city council may not revise the proposed districting plan or adopt any plan not previously prepared by the commission. Number 4, upon adoption by the city council, the proposed districting plan shall be submitted to the clerk of the city council, who shall forward the district plan to the Spokane County Auditor. The districting plan shall become effective upon filing, and the districting commission shall be relieved of any further duties and disbanded. Number 5, the districting commission's proposed plan is not approved by four affirmative votes from the city council, the proposed districting plan shall be remanded back to the districting commission to consider changes as expeditiously as possible. Number 6, the final plan must be adopted by the city council by November 15 in the year of county, state, and federal redistricting to accomplish city council redistricting or as otherwise provided for by state law. Number 7, in the event that no plan is adopted by the city council by the date established in this charter, the plan recommended by the districting commission shall be deemed the plan adopted by the governing body of the city. In the event both the districting commission and the city council fail to agree on a plan, then the plan recommended by the presiding judge of the municipal court under section F 2 above shall be deemed the plan adopted by the governing body of the city. G, modified districting. Number 1, a modified council districting plan may be established only within the fifth year of the decennial districting cycle. Should the city council determine by five affirmative votes that consideration of a modified districting plan is warranted, including for population adjustment, a districting commission shall be established pursuant to the provisions of this charter section. The districting commission shall follow the same process for a modified redistricting plan as it would follow for the decennial redistricting plan. Number 2, the city shall also establish a redistricting commission within the fifth year of decennial districting cycle upon submission of a valid citizen's petition that conforms to all requirements of S and C and is signed by registered and qualified electors of the city equal to 10% of the number of votes cast at the last preceding general municipal election. Number 3, land that is an annex to the city subsequent to modifications of district boundaries pursuant to a district plan shall be assigned to the city council district that is most contiguous with the annexed land. At its discretion, the city council may take legislative action to assign annexed land to a district in the event that annexed land is contiguous to more than one council district. H, oath of office. Before serving on the commission, every person shall take and subscribe an oath to faithfully perform the duties of that office. A, challenges to plan. After the plan has been adopted by the city, any registered voter residing with the city of Spokane may file a petition with Superior Court challenging the plan. After a modification of the redistricting plan has been adopted by the city council, any registered voter may file a petition with Superior Court challenging the amended plan. The petition to Superior Court shall comply with the requirements of RCW 298.76.010 subsection 6 regarding judicial review of redistricting plans that may be amended from time to time. Section 4, that this ordinance be submitted to the voters of the city of Spokane for their approval or rejection as special election to be held February 13, 2024, in conjunction with the scheduled general election as the following proposition. City of Spokane, measure 2, amendment to the city charter regarding city council redistricting process. Shall the Spokane city charter be amended to implement a new city council redistricting process requiring stricter qualifications for districting commissioners while altering their number and appointments by city council and mayor altering the criteria for redistricting maps demanding an increase in the number of public hearings, in addition to prohibiting any modifications to redistricting maps by the city council and introducing an option for citizen-led redistricting as set forth in ordinance number C 36480? Yes or no? Section 5, separability. If any provision in this charter amendment or its application to any person or circumstances held invalid, the remainder of the amendment or the application of the provision or other persons or circumstances is not affected. Section 6, effective date. This ordinance shall be deemed adopted by the city council immediately, and if approved by the voters at the special election to be held on Tuesday, February 13, 2024, shall take effect and be in full force upon the issuance of the certificate of an election by the Spokane County Auditor's Office.
I tried.
Thank you, Ms. Fister. We have one public comment, Mr. Steve Corcoran.
Steve.
Yes, Mr. Corker, come on down.
I appreciate very much that the development is taking place where the elected officials can be removed from the process as much as possible, as well as potential candidates. And I'm hoping, I wasn't able to hear everything, but I'm hoping that that goal was accomplished. I'd like to give the remainder of my time for thanking Karen Stratton for her outstanding service to the city. I always appreciated the fact, Karen, that there was always an open door. We could agree to agree and agree to disagree. And I think you represented the best, most outstanding features of what a city council person should be. And I thank you for your years of service. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Counsel commentary.
I just wonder if Chris could maybe just very quickly summarize the changes from the version previous? You didn't catch it?
Yes.
Not that Ms. Fisher didn't do a good job.
That's right.
It's the least I could do. So, the differences between what's on the ballot now and what this ordinance will do is several different areas. We've added the provisions about membership qualifications to ensure more diversity in the commission. We've added that the neighborhoods, keeping neighborhoods intact will be a priority under the redistricting criteria. We've also introduced the failsafe mechanism. If the council or the redistricting commission can't agree, it goes to the presiding judge of the municipal court to pick the plan, pick from among the plans that have been developed. And there are a couple ways the municipal court can get involved. Either if the commission doesn't agree or if the council doesn't agree, then it can go that direction. We've altered the percentage amount of signatures required if there is going to be a petition to challenge the plan from fifteen percent to ten percent. Yeah, so, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. What's that?
Clerk's office. The role of the clerk's office.
Oh, yes, sorry. The original ballot measure provided that the community assembly was going to be involved in both the solicitation of candidates and reviewing of their qualifications. Also, later on in the process, the community assembly has been taken out of it. The clerk's office will be soliciting applications and with the help of the city attorney, confirming that each of those people is qualified.
Counsel commentary.
Yeah, I think that summarizes it really well. And I would just add, it also, for those provisions on trying to make sure that we have a more diverse group of folks, it does provide, you know, some flexibility to make sure that we're not stuck in a corner if we don't have the right number of applicants in a certain council district, et cetera. So I think it makes kind of the best of all worlds, really pushing us in that direction but creating the flexibility to do it how the council and mayor see fit at that point in time. And I also think the change with the clerk is a good one. Obviously, we've, you know, some folks had some consternation around the community assembly, and so hopefully this puts any of those concerns at ease. And then the other piece with the municipal court, I think it was councilmembers opponent who kind of brought this idea up of, you know, there needs to be sort of a question mark at the end in order to help to put pressure on the council or the redistricting commission to get their work done and hopefully to get that done on time. So, I think these changes are reasonable. I think they represent a good, kind of a calming ground between a couple of the councilmembers here who are talking about some of these changes and making those in this ballot measure. And so I'm happy to support today.
Councilmember Sapon.
Yeah, I want to thank councilmember Cathcart for working on this and hammering out a compromise version, which is in the spirit of redistricting itself and trying to come to an agreement. Thank you, councilmember Stratton, for giving us an extra week of time and the stress of trying to figure it out in a week of time, but we got there. And thanks to staff, particularly Jacoby and Chris, who worked a lot on it, the clerk's office and legal, who worked a lot on this in the last week of iteration after iteration after iteration in the courts. Lots of people were there to weigh in. And thanks to councilmember Dillon, who worked and did a lot of outreach, and I did a lot of outreach to tons of community groups, looking at research of best practices. I think we learned a lot from our local process, but we also leaned a lot on research that has been happening over the last twenty years. From when our charter passed redistricting the first time to now, there has been a lot of efforts across the country at improving the redistricting process. And so, last cycle, we just followed our rules of what we had to do, and we've learned. And there's always ways to improve on that process, and maybe another twenty years we'll make that. But I think this makes it fairer, keeps it cleaner. On that fallback mechanism, the research was showing that to have two sides negotiate a compromise, you really have to have it lead to uncertainty on another party picking it. And so that's where the judge would pick it, and that creates that uncertainty, which leads people to more likely to agree. A big part of this that I appreciate is, the important part is who's going to serve on that commission and how do we make sure that it represents the city and its diverse perspectives and viewpoints? That's racial, ethnic, gender, geographic. And so, we hammered out a lot of iterations of that language, and I think we got in a spot that will force future councilmembers and future mayors to really make sure that that commission is diverse and represents those different perspectives and as they shape those new districts in the future.
Counselmember Dillon, any comments?
I'm really excited about this. I think it sends a really positive and powerful message that we're speaking in a unified voice. You know, redistricting in itself is really supposed to be centered around compromise. And that's what we did here. I really appreciate all the community groups that were able to provide feedback, and it really is a lesson, I think, in, you know, it's not always who is right, but it's what is right. And that's what we've done with this ballot measure. So, I'm really excited to voice my support and move this forward. And thank you, councilmember Cathcart and councilmembers opponent for all your work, and also, Chris, for the late-night legal counsel and feedback, and I'm really excited to support this.
I have to say, as your new council president, I'm really excited, and I want the city to know you have a functioning city council that knows how to collaborate. And this was a very contentious issue along with the track. And over the last week, the amount of communication has just been amazing. So I just want to applaud you all for working it out. Although they did give me the gavel, I was ready to pound a few heads if we couldn't get here, because we had to get here. And so, with no more council commentary, are we willing to take, ready to take the vote?
Oh, that was clear. Ask again.
Okay, let's do it again.
We had them locked in.
I think mine's locked.
Just locked?
That's clear.
Clear? One more time.
Okay.
Yay, thank you, guys.
Thank you all, councilmembers. Woo-hoo, that's a great one. All right, on to ordinance 36481. Ms. Fisher.
I will read this one in its entirety also. Ordinance number C 3641, an interim zoning ordinance relating to housing development regulations adopting a new Chapter 17.410 SMC interim housing regulations for maximum unit counts, establishing a work program setting an effective date and declared an emergency. Whereas on November 20, 2023, the city council adopted ordinance number C 36459 to implement actions required under Engross Second Substitute House Bill, Chapter 332, laws of 2023, House Bill 1110. And whereas, House Bill 1110 requires that the City of Spokane adopt zoning regulations that allow for the development of at least six units per lot on all lots owned predominantly for residential use unless zoning permitting higher densities or intensities applies within one-quarter mile walking distance of a major transit stop. And whereas, House Bill 1110 requires that the City of Spokane adopt zoning regulations that allow for the development of at least six units per lot on all lots owned predominantly for residential use unless zoning permitting higher densities or intensities applies if at least two units are affordable housing. And whereas, after adoption of ordinance number C 36459, real estate industry representatives raised concerns about the impact of ordinance number C 36459 and residential appraisers in the residential mortgage market in the city. And whereas, mortgage guidelines established by the Federal National Mortgage Association, FNMA, are restricted to residential properties with a maximum of four dwelling units. And whereas, appraisal guidelines established by state and federal agencies and industry organizations may limit residential appraisers from performing an appraisal of properties with a legal allowance of greater than four dwelling units. And whereas, the provisions of ordinance number C 36459 theoretically allow for the development of more than four dwelling units on any residential lot in the city. And whereas, industry representatives, the Washington State Department of Licensing, the City of Spokane, and other state agencies are continuing to evaluate potential limitations in the appraisal industry with respect to House Bill 1110 and middle housing. And whereas, it is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety and for the immediate support of city government and its existing public institutions for this ordinance to become effective on before January 1, 2024. Now therefore, the City of Spokane does ordain Section 1. Findings of fact that the preambles to ordinance number C 36459 into this ordinance are adopted as the city council's findings of fact in support of this ordinance. Section 2 interim zoning ordinance adopted and interim zoning ordinance is adopted as specified in Section 6 of this ordinance. Section 3, duration of interim zoning ordinance. This interim zoning ordinance shall be in effect from January 1, 2024 until June 1, 2024, unless extended or canceled by an act of the city council. Section 4, work plan pursuant to RCW 36.78.398. Work plan for studies related to this ordinance shall include continued public participation and noticing pursuant to Chapter 17G.025 SMC. Engagement with state, federal representatives on the issues that arise from ordinance number C 36459, and further evaluation of the effects of ordinance number C 36459 with respect to mortgage and appraisal guidelines in light of potential consideration by the Washington State Legislature and relevant federal entities. Section 5, public hearing pursuant to RCW 35.63.200 and 36.78.398. Public hearing was held on December 14, 2024 at the time of adoption of this ordinance. Section 6, that there is adopted a new Chapter 17C.410 of the Spokane Municipal Code titled Interim Housing Regulations for Maximum Unit Counts to read as follows. Chapter 17C.410 interim housing regulations for maximum unit counts. 17C.410.010 unit limits. A, purpose. The purpose of this chapter is to limit on a temporary basis the number of units that may be built on certain lots while the state legislature and federal agencies work on further guidance and adjustments to recent state legislation to address federal lending and appraisal requirements. Upon completion of that guidance, future amendments to Title 17SMC are anticipated to permanently address any issues. B, applicability. Number one, lots affected. The limitations of this section apply only to lots in the R1 and R2 zones that are smaller than 21,700 square feet and were created or configured prior to January 1, 2024. Number two, conflicts. In the event of a conflict between this section and any of the standards and requirements provided elsewhere in Title 17SMC, the limitations of this section shall supersede. Number three, accessory dwelling units. For purposes of this section, an accessory dwelling unit permitted pursuant to SMC 17.300 shall be counted as a dwelling unit. C, unit limits. Except as otherwise provided in this section, no more than four dwelling units shall be permitted on lots within the R1 and R2 zones. Section 7, severability. If any action, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance should be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction such as invalidity or unconstitutionality shall not affect the validity or constitutionality of any other section, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance. Section 8, declaration of emergency and effective date. This ordinance passed by a majority plus one of the whole membership of the city council as a public emergency ordinance necessary for the protection of the public peace, health, or safety and for the immediate support of city government and its existing public institutions shall be effective on January 1, 2024.
We have one public comment. Darren Watkins.
First, let me just thank councilmember Stratton for the time she's served. You've served your district and the city very well. I want to thank you for that. And I believe we also owe a shout-out to councilmember Bingel. Isn't this your birthday? On the not-so-happy side, we have an emergency, and that's truly why this is an emergency issue. Starting on January 1, all commercial and residential appraisals will stop. And not only does it do that, it also jeopardizes the key three federally-backed loan programs that people use: Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and FHA. And it was not something that was brought up in the last three years of testimony when we talked about House Bill 110, something that realtors were really strong behind. But now we're caught. So what this, Spencer Gardner has put together just a small set of language. All it does is it buys some time. This is not a permanent decision. It's a small fix, but it will stop this from being disastrous. And give the state legislature time to wrestle with this and figure out how to get through the wax for how to reorganize what's happening, for being able to allow commercial versus residential. Because as you know, the state wants a six-plex everywhere as well. They have a vested interest in this, and they have already given us assurances that they will tackle this, even though it's a shortened session, but this will be a priority for them as well. So we ask for your support on this. We're sorry that this came to you at the late, late date for an emergency measure, but it really will stave off a lot of hardship for people in Spokane on January 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel commentary.
Yeah, just quickly, Spokane has been incredibly progressive when it comes to our housing policy, and this is no different. And as HB 1110 passed, we adopted it earlier than we needed to. And actually, because of that, the City of Spokane saved the state of Washington a lot of hardship because these issues were found out because we were doing this earlier than we needed to. And so, you're welcome, Washington. But, no, this is a good move for us to make sure that our housing market doesn't shut down, but a fix will happen and we'll get it going forward. So thank you again, Spencer, everybody who was there yesterday. Thank you, Representative Bateman, who's working on 1110, and we'll get a fix for it.
Counselmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I really just want to thank Spencer big time on this, because as soon as we got notification from the appraisers that there were issues that we didn't know about, he jumped on it and was able to come up with at least this interim way to address that. I'm thinking of different things to bring forward in the new year related to this, but this is going to be a big issue that we do need to get fixed. And so if any legislators or folks are watching, you know, please know that the Department of Licensing does hold the power on this, and we need them to change some rules. So we'll be reaching out and connecting with you soon.
Thank you all. I also have to applaud Spencer. I got an email, and I'm thinking, what are you talking about? The sky was falling, but the planning department took that work on, did the outreach, which was really important to me as a council president, that community had the opportunity to weigh in on this. They had that engagement, came up with this solution, and here we are. So Spokane continues to lead as we always do. Prepare for the vote. Prepare for the vote. Great, thank you all. Going on next. Are going to go to...
Go ahead, Terry.
So, this one is Resolution 2023-0106, the original version, rescinding prior resolution 2023-0043.
I'm sorry?
Counsel, you could make a motion to adopt substitute version 4. That's in alignment with the ordinance version that you just passed.
I move to adopt version 4. Second.
It's a substitution.
Substitute version 4. Second.
To move to second, to adopt substitution 4. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Chair's aye. We'll go to substitution 4.
And since this is a substitution, this won't have to be written full unless you want me to. So I'll just read the title of this one. Resolution number 2023-0106, the resolution amending prior resolution 2023-43, referring to matter to the voters of the City of Spokane and directing the city clerk to advise the Spokane County Auditor to revise the proposition referred to the February 13, 2024 ballot.
Counsel commentary.
Is there, that's the correct version?
Yep, this is the version that asks the county auditor to hold an election, a special election with the version of the ordinance that you just passed.
Counsel, prepare for the vote.
We don't need a motion to add it.
Oh, I apologize. Hold on here.
Or amended.
Let me pull up.
You had moved to substitute.
I apologize, I read the wrong, I read the wrong title. So, oh, no, I didn't.
There were a lot of versions, that's why it's complicated.
I was looking at 109, sorry.
We're doing our best to confuse you two.
And ourselves. Counsel commentary. Ready for the vote?
Okay.
So, she doesn't need to read anymore?
No.
Okay.
You got to clear it first.
Oh, clear it first. Okay, prepare to vote.
Prepare to vote. Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
Resolution number twenty-two-three dash zero-one-zero-nine, I will read this one in its entirety. A resolution appointing for and against committee members relating to a measure on the February thirteen twenty twenty-four special election ballot regarding a proposition to amend the Spokane City Charter by adding a new section sixty-two or repealing sections fifty-nine and sixty, all relating to the city council redistricting process. Whereas, the city council approved Resolution number twenty-two-three dash zero-one-zero-six on December fourteen twenty twenty-three, as amended, requesting the Spokane County auditor to hold a special election on February thirteen twenty twenty-four for the city to submit to the voters a proposition to amend the Spokane City Charter by adding a new section sixty-two or repealing sections fifty-nine and sixty, all relating to the city council redistricting process. And whereas, pursuant to SMC one point zero-seven point zero-one-zero in the Spokane County Local Voters Pamlet, administrative rules for jurisdictions, the city council shall appoint committees to prepare statements both for and against the ballot measure. And whereas, RCW thirty-twenty-nine A point thirty-two point two forty-one subsection one D provides that the city attorney is to prepare an explanatory statement of certain ballot measures to be included in the local voters pamphlet. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council appoints the following members to the for and against committees to repair arguments in favor of and in opposition to measure two, as well as rebuttal statements consistent with SMC one point zero-seven point zero-one-zero and the Spokane County's administrative rules to be voted on at the February thirteen twenty twenty-four special election. The for against committee membership appointment form as provided for by the Spokane County Elections Department shall be attached to this resolution. Be it further resolved that the following appointment of for and against committee members relating to a measure on the February thirteen twenty twenty-four special election ballot regarding a proposition to amend the Spokane City Charter by adding a new section sixty-two or repealing sections fifty-nine and sixty, all relating to the city council redistricting process supersedes any previous for and against committee appointments for this measure. Be it further resolved that the city council approves that the explanatory statement provided below as provided by the city attorney be forwarded to the Spokane County Elections Department for inclusion in the local voters pamphlet. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is directed to deliver a certified copy of this resolution to the Spokane County Auditor no later than December fifteen twenty twenty-three. Measure number two for committee, Michael Cathcart, and two, Paul Dillon. Measure number two against committee, no members. Explanatory statement for city of Spokane, measure number two, amendment to the city charter regarding city council redistricting process. The city charter currently contains section fifty-nine relating to council districting and the districting board, and section sixty relating to the decennial districting process. Both sections were approved by the voters in nineteen ninety-nine. This ballot measure will update the council decennial redistricting process within new section sixty-two to the charter and repeal sections fifty-nine and sixty. Section sixty-two will recreate a six-member council redistricting commission consisting of city residents' established qualifications and prohibitions and establish a decennial redistricting process. The redistricting procedures include the commission holding public hearings to consider citizens submitted redistricting plans, and selecting preliminary plans for public review before selecting one plan to forward to the council for adoption. In the event the commission cannot agree on a plan, the municipal court shall select a plan to refer to the city council. The council, after public hearings, shall either adopt the submitted plan or remand the plan back to the commission to consider changes. An adopted plan may be challenged in superior court by any city registered voter pursuant to state law.
Council Commenter.
Council President.
Yes.
I think the explanatory statement language in the resolution she read is actually incorrect because it refers to a six-member commission, and it should be a seven-member, because that's what you've adopted today, so...
And Mr. Wright, I've been informed by the legal team that it needs to officially come from our city legal department to the county, and so he can adjust that language, but it might be good to maybe mention that here on the dice.
Okay.
And that's fine.
Is it just the change of the word to seven-member?
There were some other changes, too.
Yeah, I wasn't listening intently, so if you caught things, we should.
Yeah. So I would suggest that we authorize the city attorney to make sure, the proper corrections before it goes to the county.
So I move to allow the city attorney to make the appropriate revisions to this to send it to the auditor. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairs aye? Any noes? Any abstentions? That passes.
And then I wanted to suspend the rules to add a name to the procommittee. So we said that should require a rule suspension. So I move to suspend the rules for the purposes of amending this.
Amending the list. Any second?
Second. Well, I guess have question as to what we're adding. So are we substituting or adding? First, we have to suspend the rules, and then I can make the motion to add it, but it would be to add or substitute. Open either. Okay. That's a suspending rules.
Suspending rules. The move is second to suspend the rules for the purpose of an addition...
Of amending the resolution.
Amending the resolution. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. I don't know who the name is, I don't know what we're doing, so I'm going to say no until I know.
You want to give us clarity, Mr. Wright, as to how we're moving?
I believe the rules are suspended. But, I probably don't...
Well, I think the, your ultimate goal is to correct the composition...
Of the committee.
Of the committee.
Yeah.
So, if you clarify that your motion to suspend is to make sure that you're trying to reach the agreed composition of the pro-con committee, perhaps Councilmember Cathcart would be more comfortable with the motion to suspend.
Well, I guess what we had agreed to were two names of three, and now we're talking about three, so that's different than what we had agreed to. Technically, I don't think I'm allowed to change that. I don't know, but I believe majority plus one is four votes right now.
Yes.
So the rules are suspended.
It's usually five, but today it's four, so...
Okay, so I would either add my name or substitute Councilmember Dillon's name for my name. I'm open to either, but I think it plays a part, and this shows the community that we're all united behind it, and I think that's the key part here, is showing that two sides are united around it. So, I don't know if there's a preference of adding or swapping names, it doesn't matter to me. Well, I think that there are, as you have pointed out numerous times, that part of the changes is to make this successful with the electorate, and I think that this change could make that less successful with the electorate. And so I think two names balanced on either side makes sense to me.
And the original two names were you and you.
The one in the packet is Paul Dillon. Myself, and then...
One of those, okay.
Then, well, I would then make a motion to amend it, to remove Paul Dillon and add Zach Sapon. I will second that. I'm fine with that.
And so just clear...
We didn't have enough time to talk about it before this...
So are you okay with this?
I'm fine.
So this is clarity of changing names for the pro...
Yes.
Committee for the redistricting. Councilmember Sapon has requested, with the okay of Councilmember Dillon, that his name be swapped out under the umbrella of collaboration and balance. How we want to go for that?
So the motion was to remove Paul Dillon and add Zach Sapon.
Second that for me, Councilmember Dillon.
I'm second.
It's been moved and seconded for the name exchanged on the procommittee for the redistricting. All those indicate in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? Passes. Thank you, Councilmembers Sapon.
And then, Council President, I'll make a motion that we indefinitely defer twenty-two-three dash zero-one-one-zero. Second.
I think you still need the ultimate vote on the...
Oh, we're not...
You got a vote on it.
That was just the amendment.
That was the amendment. So on the floor right now is the motion to adopt the name change from Council... Which one do we vote?
To adopt the resolution.
To adopt the resolution. Okay, we're back to adopting the resolution. Adopting Resolution zero-one-zero-nine. All those in favor, prepare to vote. Ha, first time, thank you.
And I would like to make the motion that we make this less complicated next time around.
Second. Next, there's been a motion to defer...
Yeah, I'll restate my motion to indefinitely defer zero-one-one-zero. Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
That's just the other pro-con list that's no longer needed.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded for a deferral of Resolution zero-one-one-zero. Do I need to vote on that one?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? Indefinitely deferred. Thank you all for joining us. We wish you the happiest of holidays. Our next official council meeting will be January the eighth. We will see you in twenty twenty-four.
Hey, Betsy, can I tell my Santa joke?
Oh, yeah, we got one Santa joke, councilmembers. Meeting is adjourned, but jokes...
But wait, 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 we got a great Santa joke for everybody to enjoy because it is close to the holidays. Why is Santa scared to climb down chimneys? Because he has claustrophobia.
Boo.